Session order, start with the closing allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of our nation, our government, and our citizens, with the briefest of justice and control.
First on the agenda, we have approval of the agenda. Sir. Motion in second, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have new business, discuss current plans for reopening of school 2021, school year due to COVID-19.
Hello.
Hello.
Since we were having the special open session, we thought we would go through the plan that came out on Friday, just hit some of the highlights and answer any questions you all may have. So I'm just going to kind of flip through it as I talk, as we talk about it. So the first thing, it starts out with, you know, keeping students stay. It talks about what we hear everywhere, hand washing, social distancing, face covers. There is a term here called cohorts, and cohorts basically mean, if you think about a first grade class, we're going to keep those kids together all day long, so they're a cohort. In the middle school and high school, it's a bigger cohort because they're going from first hour to a second hour cohort to a third hour cohort. So we are going to establish seating charts and things and protocols that will help us do contact tracing a lot easier. And if you hear cohorts, that's what it's talking about, the group of kids in that area at that time. Hand sanitizer, we've ordered a lot of different types of disinfectants, and there's still some things that are on back order. We're hoping we get them by the start of school. If not, we have some things that we can use to make it through until they do arrive. Monitor your health, and then of course, we're going to try as much as possible, when possible, because of the heat here in August and September. You know, being outdoors, it's good, you know, that fresh air to get out of the mask. We were just talking about that with Mrs. Raisinger at work. So those are the kind of things we're really looking at and working on. We need families and our staff members to daily screen before they come to school. If they have a fever of 100 degrees or higher, we're going to ask them to stay home. And if you look in Appendix F, no, Appendix A of the plan, there's a really nice checklist that you can go through with all of the symptoms and just daily look at it, ask your child the question, if you're a staff member, ask yourself. And if you don't have any of these symptoms, then you should be good to go. But that will need to be done daily. I have a thermometer, I'm getting in the habit of every day checking my temperature when I get up. My daughter is an athlete, I've been doing the same thing with her. You just, you have to get into practice, so I find it easiest when you get up in the morning to go do it. So that would be my suggestion to families. Visitors, we are going to ask that you fill out a health screening questionnaire when you come in. We are asking all visitors to make an appointment before they come in so we can be prepared and know they're coming. Visitors must wear a face covering when they're inside the building. All of our offices, we have or we're working on installing Plexiglas barriers on the counters. We're doing this thing in our libraries and in our nurses' offices. So we have put those measures in place. There is a page in here, page six, where it talks about how to properly wear and wash a mask. In every classroom, we will have a gallon of cane sanitizer, a bucket of disinfectant wipes. We are going to strongly promote and encourage and have students hand wash more often throughout the day, which is always a great practice, no matter if it's COVID related or not. We are going to have a supply of masks for those students who forget theirs so they can wear our masks during the day, and they wear them home. We ask them to return them to us, and we'll take those back, and we're going to wash them ourselves, even if they do wash them at home. So we will have a supply that people can borrow and return. We have put up on social media and asked people who would like to donate masks to the school district, that we are accepting those. So if anyone has masks that they would like to donate, we would greatly appreciate it. It would definitely help our supply.
Will you accept these for donations too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because we will have those in entryways and at sporting events, if we're able to do events. So if someone comes in without a mask, they can grab one quickly and then just take it with them and throw it away.
Oh, okay.
But we do have a supply, and that's our plan right now at the disposal. The reusable, we're really using more for our kids than anyone else. Water fountains, we have covered all of the spigots that you drink out of, and we're going to ask students to bring their own water bottles. We have water bottle fillers in most major areas in all buildings. I mean, they're accessible to all students. We are actually, we put a big order in on Friday, Thursday or Friday, to get, because we can easily outfit some of our water fountains to put the top piece on so they have a water bottle filler. We can't do all of them because the older water fountains, we would have to completely tear out a wall, redo the plumbing. We are going to have to do a couple of those at Bloomdale because I think there's currently one water bottle filler. We just ordered a second one that we can fit pretty easily, but we will have to tear out a couple of more, probably once school starts to get that taken care of. So, you know, I wanted to let people know, encourage your child to bring their own water bottle and not share it with anyone. That's the hard part sometimes. We are going to require face masks on the bus, in the hallways, anytime you can, social distancing. For our bus drivers, we've talked to followed bus, and they have talked to Bob.
We've put them in contact with Bob under the health inspector, as well as Lisa Engel, the occupational health person over at the hospital. We're having those two in to talk to our faculty and staff related to health and safety in general, and then health and safety in the workplace. So I was talking to Mike Jokers last week and gave him those names, and I'm going to touch base with him again this week to see. He was planning on having them come to their, an additional meeting before a big back-to-school meeting with the bus driver so that it didn't end up too bad, but that's in the works as well.
So we are going to offer some training to our staff and the bus drivers. I'm going to go ahead and jump to the instructional options at each building. So that starts on page 12. Grades kindergarten through fifth grade, the committee that made the decision on what we were going to do at each grade level chose to make, to add a traditional five-day-a-week model because we understand that parents may have a problem with daycare because it's difficult to find daycare in this community normally. So we are going to try a traditional five-day model. We also offered a virtual option where their child could be educated five days a week virtually. Those classes are going to be taught by our staff members. I know the elementaries, I think they have all of those teachers down. Who's going to do the virtual, who's going to do the blended, who's going to do the five-day traditional? And then of course, the blended where they'll be here either two to three days a week, and then they'll be home either two to three days a week. So I'll just add with this building, we're starting with this traditional model, but if we start to have an outbreak and we can't keep all of the kids here, we may have to move those kids to a blended model just to maybe try to keep the building open and students coming part-time. So, you know, I don't want to surprise anybody with that, but, you know, we want to do everything we can to at least have students here sometimes. But these are the models we're going to start with right now, but I just wanted people to really think about that.
And this is K through five?
Kindergarten through five.
Okay.
If you chose virtual or AMI for your kindergarten through fifth grade student, August 19th from 1 to 4, and August 21st from 9 to noon, we're going to check out your Chromebooks ahead of time before school starts. So please call the office where your, the building, call the office where your child will be attending, and make arrangements with those staff members so you can come in and pick up your child's Chromebook. Building supply lists for the elementary and the middle schools are in this plan in Appendix B. Students this year who are going to do a blended are traditional where they're here on campus. They are going to take their Chromebooks home and bring them back. We've never done that before. Elementary Chromebooks traditionally have stayed in the classroom, but we feel it's important right away to start sending those home and having some homework on those Chromebooks just in case we do have to go completely virtual again for a period of time. The students know how to log in, they know how to get to their, they know how to use their device. So we are going to do that right away and try to get them used to the machine. We are going to offer Dragon's Den after school at both elementaries. For the first child, it's $120, for the second, or any child after that, it will be $8. They are working on their open house formats. We anticipate they're all going to be virtual, but, you know, be able to look out for information because we're still working through all of that and trying to make sure that we can get connected with our parents. Buildings will open at 7:15 every day. Buses will not drop off this year until 7:45. So that should back your child's pickup time if they have to ride a bus. It should back their pickup time 10, 15 minutes. We're just going to push it back. At the elementaries, we'll continue to do breakfast in the classroom, and for lunch and recess, we're going to do a modified schedule where there's only one class in the cafeteria at a time, if I remember correctly, so we can space them out. At St. Jen Elementary, we are like at 10:35, going to add another grade level, but we're going to have to use the lower portion of the high school, middle school cafeteria to get them spread out. But doing that, we're able to keep them in the cafeteria for lunch and spread them out as much as possible, well socially distance them so they can't get out of their classroom and eat lunch. And we're not going to be able at this time to do field trips. The health department didn't think that was wise for us to do that. So that is just a brief summary of our elementary plans.
If the students choose the AMI or if they're doing the alternative, like the virtual part of the time at the elementary level, they're required to be in front of the computer between 8 and 3, is that correct? Or?
With the elementary, there's going to be a little leeway?
Well, I just, you know, you mentioned daycare, but most of the daycare facilities are going to set up a classroom, study, or here to study. Just, you know, trying to figure that out, how that would look for most, you know.
Our thought was that the families who had issues with daycare were going to send them in a traditional setting so that they had that option. Those students doing blended, we anticipate them being in a home setting. And our blended and our AMI teachers, it's going to be a feeling now timeframe, right? We did shut down in March, and we do have an idea of what it should look like, but there were, there weren't the requirements in March that they were going to be now. So it's going to look different.
Parents don't think it's going to go back to what it was at the end of school year instead of having that requirement for them to be in front of a computer.
And that's going to be dependent upon grade level and upon teacher. They're going to, you know, schedule, we're going to be back on Zoom maybe in 11. Then I'm going to assign this and have you work on this. So yeah, it's anticipated to be an 8 to 3. I don't think sitting there the entire time for a kindergarten or a first grader is a great idea, and I don't know that they'll do that. There'll be some downtime and they'll schedule.
Do you have any other elementary questions?
So you've got three options for elementary. Are you going to be able to staff it all and, you know, how are you going to work on that?
Well, when we go to close session, we're going to pick some of those staffing names.
Sure.
And I'll talk about those in just a minute. But at the elementary, we have an at-risk teacher in first grade, and so we're going to pull that at-risk teacher, and she will have a classroom of her own to help reduce class sizes. And we're also going to reassign a special education teacher who had a smaller workload, and she's going to have a classroom by herself. And some of those special ed kids she works with will shift to the other special education teachers that we have. And at St. Jen Elementary, that will take care of the thing and try to create some smaller class sizes. Teachers at the elementary, well, really throughout the district, we've asked them if they have like rugs or hoes or couches or anything with a flush finished to take all of that home for now. We've also asked them that if there's furniture in their classroom that is competing in social distancing, to put their name on it, and we will try to figure out where we can sort of that. So we'll find places to do it. But for now, you know, we need to make sure we try to social distance as much as possible. Are we always going to be able to do the six feet? No, and I don't want parents to think we are, but we're going to make every attempt, and when we can, we're going to ask them to wear the mask or the face cover.
You said something about kindergarten through fifth is preschool and all of them are the same type of stuff?
Preschool, I'll get to preschool, it hasn't told me too many. It's a little.
I know you had said in spring of last year, we had pretty good numbers as far as internet access in county. And I know the plan said if you select that you can get internet access, but if anyone has a problem, can they call the district?
Call, call the building principal, talk to them. My best guess is they'll probably direct it to the needs of teams. We do have five hotspots that we can check out, and I do believe that part of the Governor's Care Act money is going to be somehow filtered to schools to help with connectivity, but I really haven't got the information on that to understand what we're going to have to do to build the funding, what our options are to use the funding on. That just kind of came out later last week.
Can you talk about the library?
Oh, our county library, Mr. Wong, Sean Wong, they're working on a grant.
Yeah, I see the county.
On a grant to provide more connectivity in our community too. I believe it is progressing along, I haven't heard any updates.
No, not early.
Not early. But I know that the library and Mr. Wong are working through that. So that may help. Then we'll go to the middle school, high school. When this group met and talked about options, they had concerns so about offering a five-day traditional model. We know older kids, specifically kids that can drive, are going to work, know that they're going to graduation parties. We know that they are going out socially. So our staff members had concerns, if a lot of them chose the five-day traditional model, how would they even, with the bigger bodies in their classroom, even be able to socially distance some of those students? So in the high, middle school, high school, we're offering two options. Virtual, five days a week, the AMI, or blended, meaning they're here two days in person, and they're home one, three days a week, three days a week. So the model that they're choosing and how they're setting this up is Group A will come on Monday, Wednesday. Group B comes on Tuesday, Thursday, and everybody is virtual on Friday. And Friday, staff will be here on campus unless there's a medical condition or something that they really need to stay away and stay at home and do their virtual instruction at home. But Friday, there'll be planning time, there'll be meetings, just a variety of things that teachers will have to be doing with their kids and prepping for the next week. Looking here. For the middle school, Group A, let me check real quick, it's the same for the high school. No, I think we're going to group them. Okay, I'm not going to. Middle school and high school, they're going to group them a little bit different. So I'm sure they'll get that information out to parents soon. Of course, if parents have like a middle school and a high school child, we need to try to schedule them on the same day so they're here at school together, and then they're at home together, and they don't have a younger child by their self. They need to call their building principals and talk to them so they can work with them and make sure that they're here on the same days and at home on the same days learning. Middle school and high school students who are going to go completely virtual and do AMI learning, again, can pick up their Chromebooks on August 19th from 1 to 4, and August 21st from 9 to noon. And remember, all the buildings set up an appointment to make that pickup. So you'll get your Chromebooks just like the elementary students before school starts. Middle school and high school buildings, again, will open at 7:15. Buses will arrive at 7:45. Breakfast is a little bit tricky when you're dropping middle school and high school kids off at 7:45. So what we're going to do is the breakfast cart will be available in the high school before school. After first hour, it will be in the middle school, available for middle school students between first and second hour to come grab breakfast. And I'm sure the teachers will work with them, letting some out early for first hour and then come in late to second hour. And then the breakfast cart will go back to the high school so after second hour, if kids want breakfast, they can come and get it. The high school's first lunch shift doesn't start until 12.
Yeah, until 12.
Right, 12? So that's why it's going to be middle school first, their lunch shift starts at 11, around 11ish. And then the high school, some of those kids don't eat until 1 o'clock. So that was a good option. Since we're talking about about half the population, they will use the cafeteria, the high school commons, and let the kids go outside to eat on that day. That way we can get the students spread out for lunch, and they don't have to, again, sit in the classroom and not be able to get out and spread out. When you talk about the high school, we also have to look at Perryville Area Career and Technical Center. If a student wants to go AMI for St. Jen and do virtual learning, but they do want to do Perryville, they are going to have to go to Perryville for those classes. So those students who are signed up for Perryville Area Career and Technical Center who are uncomfortable going down there for classes, they need to contact their high school counselors so we can give a schedule change. Unfortunately, you know, to do a career technical center, you really need to be there and hang on. So they really need to go. Okay, any questions on the middle school, high school?
So the two days they're not present, they're still learning, those two days, but from home?
Yes, yes. It's not that they just go to school two days a week, it's five days of learning. So, you know, I think there's going to be a variety of models. A teacher needs you in a class and you're actually at home, and they have you Zoom in or whatever they're using for a specific period of time. But like we talked about earlier, will they be on their computer's page three? You don't think so? But there may be times that they actually have to virtually join a class here on campus in order to obtain the information, but they'll be working outside of school on those days that are not there. It's five days of learning, no matter what you choose.
And that's why I noticed the packet, pardon me, reiterated attendance policy is still current.
Yes.
Either every day, not only you're present, but if you're required virtually, that's a day of attendance.
Yes.
So are you going to talk about the athletes and the college players, especially ones who are the middle school, if they're at home on, like Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and they're playing football, are they supposed to be able to get to campus by 3 o'clock to go to sports?
I would think so, yes. But we'll talk about athletes and. Okay. First, let me do this. You know, I think what I heard today is if there's a 5% breakout in your building, you'll need to close your, close. If you do the math and let's say 1,800 kids, I didn't include the staff in the calculations. If there are many students who test positive for the virus, we will have to close the school. Now, we're also going to look at that on a building-by-building basis. If we have a 5% breakout at the middle school with a lot of students and staff contracting the virus and we need to close for two or three weeks, we may close the middle school for two or three weeks, but if we can't, keep the other buildings open. It's going to be very cruel, and I think it has to. Because what would be the point considering elementary kids open and there's not a whole lot of breakout, and the breakout's happening? So it's just going to be, it's going to be interesting.
Unless it's a relationship, I mean, unless it's sibling?
Yes. And of course, if we do have to close a building, then everything transitions to the AMI or virtual. Learning doesn't stop just because you're home, it will transition. And like we talked about at our last meeting, this is very different from what happened in the spring. There are deadlines, there are things that have to be done, and there are grades that will be earned and assigned. Drew up every virtual instruction, AMI series that we have. So I want students and parents to be very aware of that. It's very different, we're going to pace and try to keep up with everything that is actually happening in a classroom, and we treat it like it's in the first class. These are pacing guides and go from there.
So Dr. Flay, will you let the parents know open house about that?
Well, I think I'll be able to.
You'll let them know, I mean, they know that every year, but you'll let them know that so they can't come back and say, why didn't know that these grades were going to be counted on?
Yeah, I mean, we've said it, it's in all of the communication that we've tried out.
Well. I just, I know I talked to some, and I'm not sure if they, I don't think they took it seriously. And I let them know that it was very serious, well, these are grades that are going to count?
Yes. I'm sure our virtual teachers will.
Oh, I'm sure.
Lay out. Okay, the next thing is the preschool. Right now, we're offering full-time, part-time, and fully opt-out option. The, you know, families who are already in, who don't really want their children to attend now, can let us know who they have a plan to send out, and then we can fill the spot where they want. So we are going to offer our preschool programs and do the best we can. Special education, if your student has an IEP or a report, the instructional options presented for each building, they apply to all students, including your child. If you need to talk to someone or you have questions about how that's going to work with your child, I can, by any means, talk to their caseworker and make the work through any concerns or questions that you have. Okay? For any students who is AMI, whether they're full virtual or they're doing the blended learning and it's their virtual day, they're not on campus, if they want to come and get lunch and breakfast, we're going to do a grab and go meal for them also. The difference is from March to May, we applied and were approved, our application was approved, to offer free meals to anyone in the community who is 18 or younger. So we were able to offer those free to anyone in that age range. Um, and so we were able to offer those free to anyone in that age range because of that application and that approval process. That application is no longer effective. So if you come to do our grab and go, grab and go meal, they have to be a student at St. Jen R2 and you have to bring their lunch card so we can scan it. Um, of course, students who are on free and reduced lunches will have the free and the reduced lunch rate and breakfast rate if they come and they keep their grab and go. But you know, unfortunately, we can't offer that free to everyone anymore. Um, it has to be to our students and everybody that have to pay for it. Okay? Uh, extracurriculars and athletics. Um, we've been having our athletes for quite some time do an online daily screening form. Um, they take their temperature and they answer those questions, yes or no, when they submitted. All the forms go to their coaches and their coaches review them. Um, so we've been doing that with them. We are also making our athletes sign a waiver. Um, athletics aren't a requirement. Mischa's mentioned activities are optional for kids to choose to participate in or not. So we're making them sign a waiver that they understand the risk they're taking by participating. So we will continue that throughout the year, um, as long as we have all of these guidelines in place because of the virus. Um, I'm looking through here. In the, the reopening document, we, we asked those athletes to bring their own water bottles. But Mr. Nick shared over the weekend that Mid-America Rehab is donating enough water bottles for all, all athletes to have their own bottle. So he, they'll probably figure out a way to put Jersey Hemors or something on the bottles so the kids aren't contam, cross-contaminating and using someone else's bottle. Um. Although Mischa says that virtual students can participate in activities, at St. Jen, we're still holding too. If they don't come to school, even part of the time blended, two or three days a week, then, uh, we do not, if it's appropriate for them to come on campus and go practice with, you know, same students that they would be staying in the classroom. Um, we also feel, the committee that discussed this, there's even a greater potential of exposure by athlete because they're going to be traveling to other communities and competing with other kids. So, um, the committee felt very strongly that if they chose the AMI fully virtual option, then they could not participate in athletic program, in-person Mischa's mentioned activities. Um, and we did add the in-person because we found out speech and debate, which is under Mischa's guidelines, will be virtual this year. And, uh, our speech and debate sponsors felt it was appropriate for students who chose to be virtual to also do virtual competitions. So we did add that in-person piece in case there are other activities that have a virtual option. Um, and then the last thing I was gonna share on athletics, you may have to ask your question, but I can't figure what out.
Well, I'm just thinking, well, 'cause I have a grandson that plays football and I'm not sure how he, he'd get nearby to see his mom, you know, to be back. It's time to practice now. He'd be, he'd be here at three, four, and five to practice. That probably wouldn't be a problem because the mom would be off work. But she's gonna have to pick up the granddaughter here first. Um, I don't know. I'm just thinking that could be a heading to bring anybody who's not driving yet.
Right. And her, will they do the athletes, especially middle, I'm trying to remember middle school football? Because that's quite interesting to see athletes play. Because they change when they walk down to the football field. But I don't think they started until, you know, three.
She usually runs at three thirty?
So I would suggest, you know, if you have someone in that situation, contact the coach and make arrangements. Um, and then the last thing I was gonna talk about on athletics, um, we are in the process of working on guidelines and limiting, and limitations, if you will, for spectators at sporting events. Um, we talked about it with the M-A-A today, M-A-A schools, to see if they would want to develop a copy statute. And I think there are a couple that are wanting to work on it with us. So we're gonna work on that potentially Wednesday, Thursday. Um, you know, when you think of a Friday night football game here in this community, that's a lot of people and that is something that our administrative team could not manage well, especially with little kids running everywhere. Um, so we feel it's important to put some limitations on the number of people that can be inside and outside. Um, the way we're thinking about doing that right now is we're, we're, uh, considering giving a number of tickets per athlete. Um, that way the, the athlete will get the tickets, the tickets we brought. You come to pay the date, you can come in. If you don't have a ticket, you won't be able to get it. That's the initial thought, that's not stepping stone. So all, you know, look for the documents, we'll help you have that out next week or so.
Most of the sporting events aren't going to come for.
Yes. And, um, we do livestream most of our high school events. Now, I believe Dr. Mercer, Mr. Hanyi were going to try to figure out a way that maybe we can livestream. It may not, you know, there may not be commentators this year as much as we have in the past. So just to be able to show it and, uh, that way people can see it, they can't be there in person. Yes.
You have football fans who don't have children or grandchildren, too. How are you gonna accommodate them?
They have to have a ticket.
And that kid?
They have to have a ticket. From an athlete. Yes. I know.
What about some of the boost, football boosters who get the free passes and go? And they still have to get a ticket from that athlete.
And the athlete is gonna be limited to?
Yeah, the point is to make sure we can limit the number of people in one place at one time. And so we'll ask, like, if my daughter gets six tickets and there are six of us that come to the event, we would make sure to sit with the family members or the friends, whoever came with us, to try to be in your family cohort, if you will, and, uh, distance away from other people as much as possible.
And people that come to not talk to us, you know, with you?
We're going to communicate the limitations initially, this, again, initial thoughts. We're gonna communicate the limitations to those who send them the tickets and they can give them to their athletes. And again, they have to, you know, it's not a ticket to get in, it's a ticket to actually pay for the, the.
So whatever that plan is, will be communicated out to radio stations?
Plus on our social media pages and, yes. In writing, but yes, we're still working on, that's just some of our initial thoughts.
Well, I mean, it's not like they want them to see it, just they won't be able to.
Right. Yes, like I said, we're gonna livestream as much as we can. Because the support, you know, for our kids is amazing. The livestream is wonderful. My sister-in-law in Texas keeps to watch, got to watch my kids do sports. She couldn't be here, but she'd have to see it, so that's, that's been really.
I think they do that, my granddaughter, in your business, right?
Yeah.
Probably jumping gun here, but are the individual instructors working on classes like band, choir, shop? And what those are gonna look like?
Yes. Yes, and I think, um, my next week, Monday and Tuesday, there's gonna be a lot of work done on Monday and Tuesday. I know there's work being done now, we know that, but they're going to have time in those two days to really get into it as a team and get through it all, hopefully. So that's, um, that's the summary of the reopening plan document that came out on August seventh. I'll just remind everyone, this is version one, it will constantly be changed and updated. Um, so as those come out, we will make sure to share them and notify everyone.
Really should thank the committee for getting together on their off time to work through some of this stuff. All the administrators, Dr. Green, Dr. Fleet, Dr. Lato, spent an enormous amount of time putting this document together and making sure everything's right. Uh, Gina Lidle, health department, uh, hospital staff, uh, it has been a whole lot of people getting together to come up with version one of this document. It's not, it's going to have to be adjusted, it's gonna have to be tweaked. And when you see problems, we'll adjust and we'll tweak. But the amount of work that those people put into this stuff, I mean, it's just tremendous. And that's, I want to thank the rest of them.
Just want to throw a few thank yous out there, first to you guys and our staff, just sitting here listening. You know, I know there are districts out there right now that are struggling to sign Chromebooks. We've had, you know, Chromebooks for years and, um, the communications director, everybody to your suggestion. We have a twenty-four-hour janitorial crew that helps solve a lot of problems, I would imagine. And then we just mentioned the livestream sports. So I just, I feel like we're out ahead of a lot of things that some other districts are battling. And, uh, thank you to those folks who are making the mass donations, water bottle donations. And I read recently, there's a, uh, parent at one of our schools who is buying the majority of school supplies for every kid in that building this year. So we have a wonderful community and a, a wonderful district. And even though I know, as Dr. Taylor said, everyone needs to prepare for this and prepare to change this, um, it's a tremendous plan. So thank you guys very much.
Yes, thank you.
All right, next we have addition of a Bloomsdale Elementary Assistant Principal, instructional mathematics coach position effective through the 2020, 2021 school year.
Yes, um, so I wanted to go over the plan first. I know how much time Dr. Taylor, Dr. Green, Miss Otto, Nurse Gina, how much time we need to all spend trying to manage, um, manage what this happens since March, pretty far now. Um, and I'm very thankful to have all of these people on my team to help me manage through it. Um, at Bloomsdale Elementary, we have a building principal who's going to have to manage all of these learning options and try to get all of this laid out by herself. Um, we believe that putting a part-time assistant principal in that building will greatly help her, especially if she manages the learning options, she tries to assist teachers and parents and it's a lot. I can't imagine how she's going to do it by herself. So, um, we're recommending a part-time, if you will, assistant principal. The other portion of this is the, is the instructional mathematics coach position. Um, we currently have, Mrs. Andrea Fritch is our instructional mathematics coach. She works with, uh, grade kindergarten through the fifth grade at St. Jenneville Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary. Um, we thought with this position, this person could take on the first and second grade instructional mathematics coaching at Bloomsdale Elementary and that will free up Mrs. Fritch to focus more on the grade level test, testing areas, three, four, and five. And also give her some support and someone to talk to as she works through curriculum and manipu, manipulatives and the workstation and things like that from that. So in creating this position, the trickle-down effect will be, we, we'll have a teaching position open that will fill in closed session. Um, and that person will assist with, uh, keeping class sizes smaller. We're also going to enclose session, fill, we never filled Mrs. Sherry Coons's position when she retired. We're also going to make suggestions to fill that position to assist with reducing class sizes in that building. So this position, along with those other two teaching positions, will give that building, those parents and those students a lot more support as we try to navigate the AMI, the blended and the traditional learning. And then all of those other things we just talked about, this reopen type, and we have to transition from this point to this point to this point. So that would be our recommendations.
I move to approve the addition of assistant principal, instructional mathematics coach at Bloomsdale Elementary for 2020, coming on the school year.
Second. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Dr. Free, have you heard any updates on state funding? I saw July was better.
Um, I did a webinar and it's still the same old, well, we think it's gonna be okay, but the state has to shut down again, you know, then it continues to close and we lose pressure and trust. So everyone is still optimistic that it will turn around, but there's still no solid plan yet. Um, I did work on the tax rate information, so I'll have that ready for the hearing on the twentieth. So I'm working on that still, but, you know, still optimistic, but very, probably still be very conservative.
Thank you. Next, we have action for our closing.
I move that the Board of Education hold a closing, special closing meeting with a closed record and so go find a special opening meeting on August tenth, two thousand and twenty. We're conducting the Yard River Thomas Library at seven fifteen Washington Street, St. John, Missouri, where the purpose of this discussion is voting upon the following items, hiring, firing, visiting, and promoting predicted volumes. After the move that's noted from this meeting, it's tentative agenda be closed as required by law. Secretary? Now, vote in the second vote call, Eric Bosner?
Yes.
David Boma?
Yes.
Don Hough?
Yes.
You have pressure?
Yes.
Harry Daniel, yes, one great second.
Yes.
Dr. Rudolph?
Yes.
Motion carries. Seven oh.
I'll need to go to a special close session with a closed recording of the, after short break.
Second. Our motion is the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six sixteen.